Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for attendance, please let the record show all council members are present with the exception of Ms. Merritt, Ms. Armstrong, and Dr. Dubarry. And obviously, I am filling in for the mayor this evening. We have minutes to approve from April 8th. Ah, they will, there are no minutes to approve, they will be available at a later time, um, later date. We will move on to the schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybine, if you will give us that.
Okay, here is, here is the schedule. Let's see, our first meeting actually happened already. It's, it was the State of the Community address this afternoon, or this morning. I guess it was afternoon, um, over at the Doubletree Edgewater Hotel. Um, and I expect to the quorum of council members attended to that. Um, there is a committee of the whole meeting on the 16th of, uh, April, um, from eight thirty in the morning until four o'clock, and that meeting is being held at the Doubletree, uh, Hotel Edgewater as well. The Administration and Finance Committee will meet on the 17th of April from twelve twenty to one twenty. Committee of the whole meets one twenty-five to two ten on the 17th. And Budget Committee of the whole will round out the day from two fifteen to four forty-five. And all of those meetings on the 17th are being held right here in the council chambers at 140 West Pine Street.
Thank you, and just for clarification, on the Committee of the Whole, uh, schedule, the Innovate UM Conference, that is the meeting tomorrow that council members and many members of the community are attending. And then the Committee of the Whole that is on our normal Wednesday, uh, that is Items Three and Four, the Water Bond Update and the Housing Policy Neighborhood Canvassing. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment period of our agenda. This is the opportunity to comment on items that are not elsewhere on the agenda. If you could, please keep your comments to about three minutes, thanks.
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper, still, still reading from "The Soviet Art of Brainwashing: Psycho-Politics: Art of Mental Healing," as read into the record on, on American Activities, 1936 to 39. Should any whisper or pamphlet against psychopolitical activities be published, it should be laughed into scorn, branded immediately as a hoax. And its perpetrator or publisher should be at the first opportunity branded insane. And by the use of drugs, the insanity should be confirmed. That is the ender, end of the tenth chapter. The use of psycho-politics in spreading communism. Reactionary nations are such, such a com- position that they attack a word without un- understanding it. As the conquest of nation, of a nation by communism depends upon imbibing its population with communistic tenants, it is not necessary that the term communism be applied at first to the educative measures employed. As an example, in the United States, we have been able to alter the works of William James and others into more accept, uh, more acceptable pattern and to place the tenants of Karl Marx, Pavlov, Lam- Lamarck, and the data of the dialectic materialism into the textbooks of psychology, to such a degree that anyone making a thorough study of psychology becomes at once a candidate to accept the reasonableness of communism. And I wanted to say, um, last week when we, uh, had the hearing, the public hearing for the, uh, UN Agenda 2030 stuff, I just, um, have a hard time. In the United States, we believe in a creator God. If we didn't create ourselves, how do you think you can change anything on this planet Earth in any way, fashion, or form, or keep anything from happening to it? Today Notre Dame Cathedral is, uh, burning down. There are Mississippi tornadoes and everything, and you think you have control?
Additional public comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening, members of council. My name is Peter Zeeley, I'm candidate for Governor Montana on the 2020 election. I'm sure you haven't heard much about me. Um, I come before you today to offer a resolution to the housing crisis across the state. And, um, I kinda wanna open the floor to discussion on that, if you guys are willing to have that discussion with me right now.
We actually don't do that as part of the process. This is an opportunity for public comment on any agenda items that aren't on our regular schedule. There's very, um, firm rules about noticing agenda topics, so you've got, um, you've got about three minutes, and I'm happy to-
Yes, sir, thank you, that's all I need then.
Okay.
Um, so my plan for, it actually, I wanna implement it statewide. It has to do with inviting highly technical and highly advanced industries and, um, companies here in Montana. There's a lot of underemployed people here in the state. I'm sure you guys are familiar with the term. Someone goes to school, gets educated, and there's not much opportunity for them to use that education here in the state. So, um, I wanna go through the process that you spoke about in order to open the floor to that discussion at a later time, sir. But I, I would like to head a committee to actually get companies here in Montana, invite them to come to Missoula. A few things that I was thinking, this is just brainstorming here, Boeing, NASA, Amazon. Um, the idea with that is to get, uh, people employed where they can earn a better wage. Wages are a problem across the state too, and I do believe it is a problem due with the lack of opportunity. Um, there's a whole lot more to it, and it's just kinda a brief overview to that. Does anyone have any questions about that right now?
We can't do any questions at this point, but thanks for your comments. Or do you have additional ones?
Yeah, um, what do I have to do about getting on the agenda to talk about this?
So I would kinda recommend contacting a council member from the ward that you live in. Do you live here in Missoula?
I live in Kalispel, sir.
So why don't you, um, send me an email, and I'd be happy to help you, or you can help talk to the city clerk.
Yes, sir, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Additional public comment on non-agenda items, Mr. Moore?
Uh, my name is Bob Moore. Recently I attended a meeting of the, all the members were there, I guess. Where MRA Director and a board member told about how great spending this TIF tax money was. I could, I had a hard time sitting there, but I tried to act civil. Everybody thinks Missoula's such a great place, this gentleman here just spoke, uh, talked about unemployment. He must not be talking about Missoula, 'cause Missoula's a great place to live, I hear about it all the time. Everybody's got a great opinion about, uh, living in Missoula. Anybody driven down Broadway recently, it look like a good place for you? Anybody wanna go stay there? Horrible place. This was passed out, and I've shown this before, by the food bank. One of the bullets they've got on here, one thousand plus, I don't know how many more, over a thousand, families in our store every week. We got millions to give Stockman Bank, millions to give the hotel, millions to give, uh, the shopping center, fifty thousand dollars to help our owner transfer or remake a, a, uh, laundromat into casino. And I'm sure y'all all agree with that, 'cause we definitely need some more casinos. One thousand plus families in our store every week. That's the city y'all are managing, along with the mayor. Mayor doesn't seem to be here much, I don't know where he's at. Six hundred plus after-school meals every day. One thousand twenty-five kids in power packs every week. Six hundred and fifty plus senior deliveries every week. Just to get an idea of what the food bank really was, 'cause I really didn't know what it was, I went over there a few days ago. Talking to a lady where you sign in, and she says, oh, there's five places in Missoula where you can go get free handouts. And we now have a city, we have a city that y'all are managing that needs that kind of work done.
Think we're at about four.
Four?
Yeah.
I wanna go over.
I'm generous.
I think you ought to start trying to help the citizens here, instead of all of your friends and so forth, putting up these millions and millions and tens of millions of dollars. In fact, you could just start by eliminating-
Mr. Moore, we're over four minutes now.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Additional public comment?
Good evening. Did you turn that off? Andy Helsel from Ward Two. Um, I was happy to read last week in the Missoula Current that the city is in fact considering real solutions to the problem of public waste. The solutions that we find have to be creative, and they have to be bold, and they have to be forward-thinking. Today is Tax Day. I know that one of the solutions that other cities have implemented and that the city has considered is implementing a tax on plastic bags. But taxes disproportionately affect low-income folks. Also mentioned in the article, our push is to change social norms and ask businesses to engage in voluntary programs. I have a couple of problems with these solutions. First, let me say that incremental change will be the death of us. This is urgent. Secondly, social norms shifting is already in motion, it's been in motion, it's happening, but it is not nearly enough. We need to eliminate plastics, not just force people who are already struggling in this community to pay an extra tax. We need to eliminate plastic bags. We need to significantly reduce and/or eliminate single-use plastics in all forms. We need to go beyond this, and we need to address waste at every level in, of our community. Missoula has two places that I'm aware of where residents can drop off recycling. One of them, uh, takes zero plastics, and the other takes very few. If you're fortunate enough to be able to afford curbside pickup, which at its cheapest that I could find is twelve dollars a month, you can recycle more, but that's assuming you're in the category of folks who can add to your monthly bills and you're in a residence that has space for that recycling and for that storage container. Many folks are not. If you're limited to drop off, you probably need a car, a bike and bus is possible, carrying a lot of recycling, but very few folks are probably gonna go that far above and beyond. Compost pickup is at least as, at its least expensive is fourteen or fifteen dollars a month. Adding that to your monthly bills for a lot of Missoulians is just out of the question. If you wanna compost in your home, you probably have to be a homeowner. I don't think that I need to talk to the city council about what it's like to try to be a homeowner in this community. Because setting up a space to compost and create soil that you can add to your garden is a lovely idea, but it requires a lot. Um, if you've got the time, the energy, and the materials, and the space, you can do that, but I know a lot of folks don't have it. What this means is that people of relative privilege, and then among them only those whose value system aligns, are the only people in a position to recycle or compost in this community. In the grand scheme of things, that's very few folks. You really have to go out of your way to recycle and compost in this community, not everyone is able to do that. You as city representatives can and must address this. You know that this is a serious issue, and you have many resources at your disposal, including my tax dollars to make it a reality. I read in the Missoulian today that Andy Halloran and his investors are planning to ask for 1.9 million dollars in tax increment financing to clear the space on Patty and Main where he plans to put another multimillion-dollar hotel. I have to ask, what are the city's priorities? Another Marriott will come in and build in our city, inviting mostly wealthy folks to come in and enjoy our town. Yay, guess what? That Marriott will not be required to recycle. Not aluminum cans, not plastic bottles, not anything, because there is no law in the city that requires it. And as I said in front of this council last week, I was at the new Marriott and watched them throw away many recyclable products.
We're at four minutes.
I ask you to engage in, in developing a voluntary system. Instead of spending millions of our tax dollars funding luxury hotels, how about you use those to develop supportive recycling and compost programs? How about requiring that residents, especially businesses, engage in these programs? Showing that the planet is a priority, that my children and their friends and all the other young folks are. Thank you.
Additional public comment? I don't think it is. It, just press the red button and, and test it, is probably the easiest way to do it, and if not-
Okay, is that working now? Cool. Um, my name is Letitia Romero, I'm in Ward Four. I wanted to just quote, um, Skyborne from Environmental Montana. It was in an article in the Missoula Current, um, titled "Missoula Moves to Study Ban on Plastics," um, this week. Moving beyond single-use plastics, it's something we can do right here. Nothing we use for a few minutes should be allowed to pollute our land and our rivers for hundreds of years, especially when we don't really need it. I'm just here again to press on the urgency of doing something about our plastic trash here in Missoula. Again, I think we're a really, really creative city, and I feel, again, that priorities need to be put up higher. This is something that we can easily do, other cities have done it as well. Um, thank you for taking initiative to at least taking the study, um, to make it happen. Um, I'm just here to, again, just press a little bit more urgency, um, for ideas. Yeah, we don't really need plastic. Um, I'm just, there's two local businesses here that, well, one focuses on compost, um, soil cycle, I think it is. But it may be if the city also takes priority in composting, um, that's just, and instead of throwing things in the landfill right away and using plastic bags to put that trash in there, to put in a landfill, maybe we can, um, think about composting. And again, there are people here in the city, in local businesses, that are willing, probably, to like step up with some help, the community, um, to make it happen. Yeah, as well as, again, um, as the comment before me just said, you know, we're here putting, letting all these multimillion, whatever, hotels, you know, for tourism, and come here, trash our city, plastic, plastic everywhere, inundating our land and polluting for hundreds of years. Um, where, where our priorities should be with our children, with our land and our earth. We're creative people, I know we can live without plastics. It's been done before, it's just a recent invention, so, um, Amelia, did you wanna say something? Okay, this is my daughter. Amelia, go ahead, Mama.
Uh, what did you say? Okay. No, I wanna, just put it down here. Now you come up here. Hi, my name is Amelia. It was a giant, plastic has to stop. She was a giant, plastic has to stop.
Um, no, we have to.
We have to protect the earth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Vrokosh, and I am also here to talk on the plastic issues. Um, just for a little fact, about eighteen billion pounds of plastic is added from coastal regions, whether it's floating through rivers as well. Um, and I just did a recent cleanup right along the ditch, um, right to the left of Third Street, if you're heading kinda south. And most of what we picked up was plastic bags or remnants of what used to be plastic bags. It's just, you know, become kind of habitual at this point for everybody to just not really think of the long-term consequences, but eventually we're going to pay them, and I also do not think, you know, having these programs that are gonna affect, specifically talking about taxation, is going to disproportionately affect lower-income residents. Um, and just fully getting rid of them and trying to think of a way, you know, whether it's implementing a charge on paper bags to put towards environmental programs, but we don't really have any more time to put this as a backhand issue. And like, people, before we mentioned, we are a creative city, and we are kind of an environmental oasis of environmentally conscious thinking in Montana, and I think it would be really awesome for us to keep leading and coming up with creative ways that can positively affect the environment and don't have to disproportionately affect other people within the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Evening, City Council, my name is John Carpenter, I don't know what ward I'm in, um, whatever encompasses the Equinox Building, I have no idea, I haven't been there yet. Uh, also like to speak, I think more than likely just from the sense of history, um, the cost that you guys would take, you're looking at now to, uh, decrease the use of plastics in this valley is minor compared to what you're gonna see down the road. It's caused, it costs us millions of dollars from activities from the White Panting Sash Company, that's EPA site. It's costs, it's gonna be costing you, it's a, it's gonna be costing monetary, um, and the current redevelopment of the Triangle area. That used to be a dump back in the fifties, when the environment will take it. Well, it can't. I know there's definitely ways, and there's some science that could definitely bolster, and there's, there's opportunities here. But I just want you guys to think from the sense of history, your names will probably go down in records long before anybody, long after we're all gone. But what you do here, can help set forward for generations to come. Come on, guys, let's do something for the kids, let's leave something better for our kids and grandkids. I'm gonna be able to have my grandkids come here. And, you know, truth be said, I, I'd like to speak for all Montana, I'm probably umpteenth generation Montanan from here. I'm from up on the High Line. We have our troubles up there too, and we have to solve that. But, Missoula, we can do it, you can do it, look for possibilities. The cost you think of now is very small compared to what it will be down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees by unanimous vote. We save time in council meetings by voting on these items as a package. City clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda, and we'll invite community to comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks, tonight's consent agenda has eight items. The first, as always, is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable. And tonight they are in the amount of four hundred sixty, excuse me, four hundred sixty thousand, six hundred five dollars and ninety-five cents, and the checks are dated tomorrow, April 16th, 2019. Number two is to appoint Dwight Easton to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee for a term that begins immediately and ends on November 30th, 2023. Number three is to set a public hearing on May 6th, 2019, and adopt a resolution of intention to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula a certain, uh, parcel of land that's located at 2526 Strand Avenue and described as portion, as a portion of Lot Two in the Coben and Dinsmore's Orchard Homes Number Three addition. It's a, uh, one hundred and five feet by four hundred and fifteen feet, and it's located in the southwest corner. Um, that is located in Section Thirty of Township 13 North Range 19 West, Principal Meridian, Montana, along with the portion of Strand, of the Strand Avenue right-of-way adjacent to the property. And the proposal is to zone that property RT 2.7 residential in the city. Number four is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of James Corrick and can, and confirm the appointment of J.R. Casillas to the Missoula Parking Commission for terms that begin immediately and expire on April 30th of 2023. Uh, number five is to confirm the mayor's appointment of James Walter to fill a vacated position on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board for a term beginning immediately and expiring on September 30th of 2020. Number six is to award the bid, uh, for construction services on the Railroad Street Water Main Replacement Project to Knife River of Missoula for an amount not to exceed four hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred ninety-six dollars, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Number seven is to prove and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Morrison Merrily Incorporated for engineering-related services for the Upper Garrett Drainage Improvement, Capital Improvement Project, Number 2019-023, for a total cost not to exceed eighty-four thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars. And finally, number eight is to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missoula, Montana, to open a portion of the north-south alley in Block Three of the Beck's Home Edition, previously closed by Council Resolution Number 4765, and relocate it south, uh, to the northwest property line of 108 Livingston, keeping the alley closed further south of the barrier, and pave the alley from the new location of the barricade north to the parking area at 2401 South Higgins Avenue only, and retain the current right-of-way, or excuse me, right-turn-only sign.
Thank you. Is there a public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda?
Good evening, uh, Tom Hightower, 516 East Kent, regarding item number eight on the consent agenda. We'd just like to thank the city council for their reconsideration of this item, and both the residents on that alley. Very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Any additional public comment on any item on the consent agenda? Any council questions or comments? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, due to the hundred and three thousand dollars of tax increment financing money going to the West Broadley Island improvements, can we please divide the question and vote on item one separately?
Uh, let's divide the question on which one?
Uh, item one.
Item one, claims?
Yeah.
You can certainly do that. Any additional questions or comments from council? I will simply say, um, Chris, hopefully his last council meeting here for a long time. All right, we will divide the question, and I have a roll call vote on item one.
Okay, on the claims, uh, Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Cares? Cares votes yes. Uh, Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. Von Laasberg?
Yes.
Von Laasberg votes yes. And West? West votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? Eight ayes, one nay, and three absent.
And a roll call vote on items two through eight.
On the rest of the consent agenda, Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Cares? Cares votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Um, sorry, Merritt's go, Merritt's out. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg?
Yes.
Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes, and Anderson? Anderson votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? Uh, that is nine ayes and three absent.
Great, we'll move on to comments from city staff agencies, wards- We'll move on to comments from city staff agencies, wards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. And I believe we have an Upper Rattlesnake Neighborhood Council report from Bev Young. Hi, Bev.
I'm Bev Young from Ward One, Upper Rattlesnake. We had a neighborhood council meeting a week ago. I think it was the best-attended meeting I've ever been at in the Upper Rattlesnake. And that's probably due to the fact that we were talking about the removal of the Rattlesnake Dam, which was of great interest to many people up there, both from its recreational perspective and the effects on the creek, and just the general development in the neighborhood. We really appreciated Morgan Valiant coming out from Parks and Recreation, the Conservation Lands Manager, to speak about both the removal of the dam and also the Syringa Bicycle Park, which will be opening partially this summer. We also talked about briefly the housing policy and encouraged people to comment on that. We understand it will be presented to the council in May. We had questions from the audience for our city councilors, some questions about the difference between conservation lands, maintenance, mill levies, and bonds. And we also looked at priorities for our neighborhood, and people voted their priorities. And the four items that floated to the top were wildfire preparedness, urban deer, imagine that, non-motorized transit infrastructure, and no new street lighting in our neighborhoods. And I need to go back to that issue about another reason people came to the meeting, because our Upper and Lower Rattlesnake Transportation Committee spoke, and that's really a big item for the Upper Rattlesnake. There's a lot of interest in developing a trail along Rattlesnake Drive. There's maybe not enough neighborhood commitment and volunteerism to make it happen yet, but people are very interested because that route is not only used by local people, but many people from around town to access the national recreation area. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Kares?
Well, come back. You said the fourth priority was against new street lighting, correct?
Yes, not the actual bulbs, but just not putting in more lights.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on to special presentations. I'm gonna see if I can make it through this. We have a few. First one is Arbor Day. Hopefully my tongue does not swell up here. Whereas Arbor Day is a special day observed throughout the nation and around the world since eighteen seventy-four for the planting of trees, and whereas Missoula has been a Tree City USA recipient for thirty years, and our city is blessed with beautifully treeed mountainsides, tree-lined rivers, and canopy-covered yards, giving us pleasurable places for living, working, and playing. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, intercept stormwater, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, acting for John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim April twentieth, two thousand nineteen, as Arbor Day in Missoula, Montana, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, to support our city's urban forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. I'm guessing someone might want to come up and get this proclamation. And you're welcome to say a few words. Just try it again.
Okay, there we go. I'm Marie Anderson. I'm acting for Chris Boza. I'm the Urban Forestry Specialist. I just wanted to say thank you very much for doing the proclamation. And also, I just wanted to plug Run for the Trees. Please come out. There's still time to register this Saturday at nine o'clock?
Yep. Well, yeah. Go to runwildmissoula.org. I am Karen Sippi, Trees for Missoula. We advocate for the urban forest, and we also have volunteers for the urban forest. Couple of ways that everyone can help support our urban forest. One way is to either run in Run for the Trees this coming Saturday, or volunteer for Run for the Trees. You can become a volunteer with Trees for Missoula, and we do lots of great things. We plant trees and prune trees for the city. The funds that come from Run for the Trees directly purchase bare-rooted trees for our city that Trees for Missoula volunteers plant every fall in our city. So, thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Want to come up and comment this? Moving on to our next proclamation. Whereas Frederick Law Olmstead, the founder of the modern profession of landscape architecture and the designer of Central Park, the U.S. Capitol grounds, Stanford University, and other landmarks, was born April twenty-sixth, eighteen twenty-two. And whereas landscape architecture is the profession that integrates site analysis, master planning, design, and technical skills while promoting stewardship of the natural and built environment, and landscape architects work to preserve public health, safety, and welfare by creating public parks and civic spaces, revitalizing towns, and enhancing historic preservation. And whereas landscape architects work in private firms and public agencies to enhance the scenic, aesthetic, and cultural character of Missoula, western Montana, and the Pacific Northwest through such major projects as Fort Missoula Regional Park. And whereas in nineteen twenty-four, it was the design vision of Thomas Vin, NPS landscape architect, that gave us the root of the now-famous Going to the Sun Road in Glacier National Park. And whereas the Idaho-Montana chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects represents landscape design professionals throughout our region, now therefore, I, Brian Von Losberg, acting for John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim April twenty-nineteen in Missoula, Montana, as World Landscape Architecture Month. Yes. Sorry to end so poorly.
You knew I'd be here.
Glad to see it.
President Von Losberg, councilpeople, thank you for the opportunity to recognize our profession. We're small, but mighty. Many of you probably don't, didn't realize until you heard the proclamation or saw it in your agenda materials that the Going to the Sun Route was a vision of a landscape architect in nineteen twenty-four, who stood his ground against a road engineer who wanted to put fifteen switchbacks up Logan Creek to reach Logan Pass. Unfortunately, Stephen Mather, the first director of the National Park Service, a real character and charismatic entrepreneur, stormed off the mountain and muddled around for a couple of weeks with, in conferring with his peers, the superintendents of other parks around the country, and they all realized, yes, it'll be expensive, but it'll look so much better. And those of you that travel that route will know, if you're coming in from the west, going along McDonald Creek, and you look up, you can't see it. The only time you see that road is if the sun reflects on a windshield. And that was the vision of Tom Vin, who was another Berkeley graduate, I'm glad to say, who had the vision to make that happen. I also just wanted to mention very briefly that we're having an event at Fort Missoula next Friday, the twenty-sixth, which happens to be Olmstead's birthday. We're going to have people there talking about the process that developed Fort Missoula Park. It was a collaboration of a landscape architecture firm based out of Idaho with an office in Coeur d'Alene, and local professionals such as Neil Minor on your park staff that made that project all come together. And we're gonna have some time out there on Friday. We're still trying to decide a time, and we'll get some publicity out on that. We like to have people understand and appreciate the fact that the complexity of dealing with our very precious Montana landscape, it has to involve trained professionals such as landscape architects. So, we appreciate the opportunity to have you read our proclamation. Thank you.
Halfway there. Whereas the safety and well-being of its citizens continues to be one of the foremost concerns of the city of Missoula, ensuring that safety and well-being require, ensuring that safety and well-being requires the ability to receive calls for help and immediately send responders to provide that help. And whereas nine-one-one is the first critical link in the chain in delivering public safety services. And whereas the safety of those responding to emergencies is also of great concern to the city of Missoula. And whereas the telecommunicators who work in nine-one-one display a superior level of commitment, dedication, and professionalism in accomplishing their mission of receiving calls for help from citizens, dispatching emergency response agencies, and maintaining a communication link with the responders for safety purposes. And whereas those same telecommunicators often work extraordinarily long hours and difficult schedules to provide this service to the public and to ensure the safety of responders, but often go unrecognized. Now therefore, I, Brian Von Losberg, acting for John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, recognize the week of April fourteenth through twentieth, two thousand nineteen, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. I thank the telecommunicators in nine-one-one for all their efforts and hours and hard work under very difficult circumstances. The community truly would not be safe without them. I also encourage the community to recognize the importance of the function of nine-one-one and to thank these dedicated individuals in writing. Thank you. Does anyone here like to speak on this item? We have one last proclamation for Outstanding Volunteer Day and Month, and I would like to ask Jane Kelly, the neighborhood coordinator, to come up and give us some background.
Good evening. I'm very happy to be back here for another year for this great award that we are going to give. Each year, the Office of Neighborhoods and Community Forum solicits individuals and groups who have made significant positive neighborhood contributions through their volunteer efforts. A committee recommended the nominees, who are then confirmed by Community Forum. It's fifteen years since this was started, and I was so inspired by seeing so many great volunteers in Missoula working tirelessly in their neighborhood councils. Working with Community Forum, we were able to create the award to honor one individual a year and a group. We didn't have a group this year. The award recipient will have a tree planted in their honor. Recipients' names have been added to a plaque which will be on display in City Hall. And let's see, where was I? A special day is named in their honor by the mayor's official proclamation. And before we get to that part, I just want everybody to know that cake will be served. And thank you, Gwen, for getting the cake. We appreciate that. And so, it is very fitting for the council president to announce the recipient and read the proclamation. Brian?
Not sure I've ever seen this name before. Hope it's not a mistake. It is my great honor to announce that Mike Painter is the recipient of the award. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Missoula recognizes the significance of local volunteerism and dedicated neighborhood service, now therefore, I, Brian Von Losberg, acting for John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby proclaim April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, in Missoula, Montana, as Mike Painter Outstanding Neighborhood Volunteer Day, and honorably declare the month of April to be the Outstanding Neighborhood Volunteer Month, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing their profound connection to place and to each other by offering their service for the betterment of their own neighborhoods in challenging and meaningful new ways during this commemorative month and beyond. I'd like to invite Mike up and present him with this plaque.
I appreciate your kind words. I'm not a big fan of personal accolades, in part due to my upbringing by the women and men of the fire service I had the pleasure of working with and for, who give PhD-level training on the value of unified teams, in part due to my more personal study with and full-time instruction by my wife, son, and daughter, that perhaps we're in this mess together, and collective power is infinitely greater than our own individual abilities. That said, I am a huge fan of Missoula and of Missoula's Neighborhood Council. I think there is value in promoting them and how they tend to lead to greater immersion and citizenship for all of us. Also, Jane Kelly knows that and will use that against me as necessary. Plus, to cite the wisdom of the prophet Thomas Aschimberg III, you can't have too many reasons to celebrate and have cake. So, at the pretty clear direction of a first-grade teacher whose class I've been auditing from home for some thirty years, I'm going to buck up and just say thanks. So, thank you very much. There are so many opportunities in Missoula to get involved in working to make our little town better and to meet like-minded people in the process. Just today at City Club and this afternoon at MCTAC, and at pretty much every neighborhood council and community forum meeting I've ever been to, the moral of the story we're writing is, there are real problems facing us, but our strength is in working together toward a solution to those problems. I do need to close with two things in honor of James R. Rambo Jr. If you haven't yet watched the MCAT footage of the recently completed Local Government Citizens Academy, you should. I think it will give you an appreciation for what city government does for this community, even though they all kind of dog Jeff's Fire Department after, as the Fire Department, the cops go first, and everybody likes them. I heard that a lot. But by coincidence, if you believe in such a thing, one of my baby brothers recently completed Flower Mound, Texas's version of their Citizens Academy, and their graduation ceremony included the following pledge. As a graduate of the Citizens Academy, I am ambassador to our community and will do my best to be a well-informed, responsible citizen. Inform others of matters facing the town, encourage my fellow citizens to engage in local issues, inspire the sharing of ideas within the community and government. I pledge this because I believe an engaged citizenry makes us a stronger community. Now, that's not a pretty good call to duty. I don't know what is. So, thank you very much. And to quote my daughter from thirty years ago, "Let's have cake."
I'd like to invite anyone up who might want to say a few words about Mike. Yes, otherwise known as rebuttal. Wow. Jumped out of his seat.
We're good. All right. My name's Jeff Brant, and I work for your Missoula Fire Department. Certainly would be remiss if I did not speak, certainly accolades, to Mike Painter, who hired me as Assistant Chief, certainly a great friend and a mentor to all, and someone who we speak highly of, we model after in the, in fire service, and just a great human being. So, a very noble man and a good friend to the citizens of Missoula plus the Fire Department. Thank you.
Additional rebuttal. Anybody? Yes, you may. Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to say a few words. Ever since I got involved in city government at the neighborhood council level, Mike Painter has been an institution in that neighborhood and on that council, and he has been an incredible resource and an asset. You can go to him with any question, and he has a wealth of knowledge. He can answer it. And he has no ego. He is very humble. There be it a big project, I've sat in a room with him with thirty people on some contentious issues, and it can be as small as him going and shoveling a driveway so someone can get out, elderly person can get out of their driveway. No matter how big or how small, he is there to help, and I think it's because he cares greatly about this community. And in return, Mike, we care greatly about you, so thank you so much.
Ms. Harp?
I have no mic for, I think, just about a year and a half now, but time flies, and I'm, I feel incredibly grateful for coming into your orbit. One of the, I think, the true gifts that you gave the neighbors of Rose Park that I hope other neighborhoods have adopted is a two-sided piece of paper. I know that sounds a little strange. However, in today's day and age where everything is found online, most of us need to be able to get... to get a hold of a number that you don't want to have to go online for. And unfortunately, it's not just 911, but it's animal control, or perhaps it's who do you call when you have a dead deer in your backyard and don't know what to do with it? And of all the people in this world, it was Mike Painter who put that together. And so, us neighbors are, I think, every one of you have one of those, correct? Yes. And where is it? It's on your fridge, or it's on a corkboard? Right, exactly, when you need it. Today, I saw Mike, now, third time today, I was at City Club with you, and then at a MICTAC meeting where he showed up as our community member today. And you might note that he's wearing a name tag, and it says Michael Painter, but I couldn't read what it said underneath it. So, someone leaned in, and I'll want you to know it says underneath his name, unemployed but enthusiastic. And I think that sums him up.
Any additional comments? Come on up. Let's make sure that Mike...
I'm Tony Rollin, and I'm chairman of the Missoula Neighborhood Watch. And for those of you who don't know, we're reviving that, and sometime we'd like to get back and speak to you more about that. But the reason why I'm here is that Michael is our treasurer. And he is also, when we need him to step up and take care of things, let's say when I'm gone, or if there's anything that ever needs to be done, you can always count on Michael. So, just one more area where he's making a positive impact, and it's great to see him get this award.
Thank you.
So, this is awkward because at Neighborhood Council, Mike does all the talking. So, I don't really know what to say. We're all sitting back there going, no, you, no, you have to go, no. So, I'm Katie LaPointe, representing the Rose Park Neighborhood Council, who clearly are at a loss for words because we don't know what to say. So, Mike, what do we say? What do we do? He is our rock. He is our compass. He is all of that and more. And we would be a very, very lost neighborhood without you in it, Mr. Painter. So, thank you for all of your guidance and wisdom and excellent, excellent emails. My goodness, the man can, he is a wordsmith. My goodness. If you're not on his, like, do you do a weekly? Can we subscribe? Is that like a thing? Go onto his podcast, subscribe. It's fantastic. You'll enjoy it. So, thank you, Michael. We are in your debt for a very long time, sir.
No way we're going to stretch this out as long?
Hi, I'm Julie Devlin. I'm on the leadership team of Rose Park also. Since the spring of 2012, when Mike sent out a postcard, and I went, and he was the, he was the, the Rose Park Leadership Team. He was the only one, and I put my hand up. He's the most kind, generous, honorable, and trustworthy man of character, integrity, and sincerity, yet he has such a lively sense of humor like no other I've ever experienced in my life. He is the Rose Park Leadership Team, and I told why, but I'll give that to Mike. Mike sees the best in everyone because he anticipates that we are at our best because we don't want to let him or ourselves down. So, we rise to the occasion, and we become better persons for knowing him. And that's the truth. Thank you.
I will quickly add, I'm glad the emails came up. I have, on more than one occasion, found my wife, Genevieve, who works for Garden City Harvest, chuckling over something, and when I have asked what it is, it is an email from Mike Painter. I will simply say, Mike, that just the person you are and your generosity of spirit is one of the very, my most favorite things about serving on council, so thank you very much. We will move on to communications from the acting mayor. I will pass, and we'll move on to council. I don't recall which place we started, but we'll start with Ms. Harp.
All right. Ward Three begins and ends tonight. Look at that. So, what I wanted to just bring to people's attention is this Wednesday night is the West Campus Industry Night. And this is an opportunity, if you have any interest whatsoever in the future of the trades in our community, to come and get involved. 5:30 is when we start, and we're actually going to be out on the West Campus of, out at 2793 37th Avenue. And it's going to run for two hours. It's going to have a working dinner and discussion with our various different community partners. As we all know, we have a lack of people in the construction trades, and part of it is a cultural shift in our expectations of our young people. But we also recognize that things have to change, and this is an area where we actually can have good, paying jobs. And so, we have to move the needle in terms of bringing that whole industry back to where it really belongs. So, I hope you can join us.
Thanks, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you so much. I do also want to add my accolades for Mr. Painter. I want to acknowledge that he stayed with us until the very end of the budget meeting that wrapped up about 2:45 at night, and he was here, and I was appreciative of his presence. And I want to thank all of you who serve on the Neighborhood Council, and I think it's an important way for you to show up for, you know, doing your part. Yes, Missoula has challenges, but we also have a lot of amazing people. So, thank you all for those of you who serve on your Neighborhood Council, serve in various ways, like Chief Brand. It takes all of us playing our part to really make this community what it is. And so, I thank you all for your service. I thank my fellow council members for their service. And for everyone out there, I think it was a couple of weeks ago in our discussion around moving to clean energy, and someone quoted Robert F. Kennedy, who said, you know, small changes makes, I'm getting, not getting this right, but basically, you know, if you, everyone doing their part, make small ripples that eventually lead to large seas of change. And so, thank you all for doing your part.
Ms. West?
I just wanted to mention that one of my favorite events in Missoula happened over the weekend, which is the Wild Clock Parade. There were some amazing costumes. And also, just a reminder that the International Wildlife Film Festival is happening all of this week, and there's lots of amazing things to see.
Mr. Hess. Mr. Omas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I missed a lot of this last week as I was absent, but I just wanted to thank Mr. Goble and his whole team for kind of bearing with us. I know that it's difficult enough in Missoula to start a business without having to kind of jump through a lot of the unexpected twists and turns that we threw at you, and you didn't have to be as accommodating as you were, and I really appreciate that. And I know that it likely cost you guys thousands of extra dollars because of some of our errors and some of our lack of communication with you. And I just want to say that I really appreciate it, and I'm really looking forward to having your business in our ward. I will miss Hoagieville, though, but if anything good came out of this delay, it means I got a couple more hoagies and cheese fries. So, happy about that, but I want to thank you guys again for being so accommodating and looking forward to visiting your brewery.
Ms. Sarah?
Well done, sir, Mike Painter. I want to be you when I grow up. I just want to remind people that there's a Fire Wise meeting on the 17th at the Best Western Grand Creek Inn to get your house or your property ready in case any fire event happens. Thanks.
Ms. Kears?
My favorite thing about Mr. Painter, I guess we were really not feeling brave enough to comment during the time when it was your moment, but we're just going to keep talking about you, so that's cool.
Noted.
Is the footnotes on the emails. So, now I've aired that, and I feel better about it. I wanted to point folks' attention to a recurring item on our city council agendas during the legislative session, that being the legislative report wherein our lobbyist, who we pay, provides updates on the bill progress, those that we are monitoring in opposition of and support of. And I read through this one with particular attention to detail, and it's just astounding the level of impact that the legislature has on all of us. And so, wanted to bring up that for folks' attention. It's your city, too, and if you have thoughts about the legislature, we'd be happy to help pass this along to our lobbyist. So, thanks.
Ms. Jones?
Just a little bit of housekeeping. Good news is the tennis courts are all open, thank heavens, and all of the tennis players are out playing. As for soccer and lacrosse, though, the Parks Department wanted me to pass on that due to the cold and wet spring, the grass is still dormant and has not yet established its base roots. It's going to be another week to a week and a half. And so, the Fort Missoula Regional Park natural grass fields are still closed. The Bella Vista turf, synthetic turf field is open, but it is in high demand, as you can imagine, and you need to reserve it. Maloney Ranch and Jeffrey Parks are also closed until another week or week and a half, and those, all of the turf is established. So, if it's not on that list, it's open, but please be patient, and Mother Nature is doing her work her way this spring. Thanks.
Thank you. We have no items under committee reports, under new business. Ms. Kears did an excellent job mentioning the work that goes on at the legislature and the attached reports. Are there any comments from anyone in council or questions on that front? I think something happened with Medicare today, Medicaid. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none, any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, and announcements? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your attendance and your service. We are adjourned. Cake.